We are on officially called order the regular meeting of Coachella Valley Water District, Board of Directors here in Palm Desert on 2-2-2-2-2. That's the date, in case you're wondering. It's a great date.
It is Tuesday.
And it's Tuesday. It's 8:02 on 2-2-2-2-2 on Tuesday. As Vin Scully would say, the Deuces are wild.
That's right. Just wait till military time.
Yeah, that's right. There he is.
I'll be asleep.
So let me read, good morning, read the introductory remarks and then we'll get into it. I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting is being conducted pursuant or as permitted under AB 361 and Board Resolution 2021-43 in an effort to protect public health, prevent the spread of COVID-19, and because state and/or local officials are recommending measures to promote social distancing, the public may view this board meeting online or virtually. The public may also attend this meeting in person. Meetings being streamed live to the district's website on CVW.org. As stated on the agenda, members of the public who wished to comment on any item within the jurisdiction of the district or any item on the agenda may provide comments in person at the meeting or via Zoom. I don't know why we want to see if we have, because we're going to just ask that in a minute if we have any public comment. We can take that off probably. And then we have all board members at the dice, so as long as that is the case, we will conduct this meeting in person, which is really nice. If you are a member of the public wishing to comment, please use the raised hand feature on Zoom so that the clerk of the board can see you. And with that, why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And let's do roll call, please.
Good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianco.
Here.
Director Aguilar.
Here.
And Director Nelson.
Here.
Thank you.
Good. Nice to see everybody. Do we have any additions, deletions, or adjustments to the agenda for today?
Yes, sir, not to my knowledge, and I don't see anybody jumping to their feet to get our attention.
No. And just as a point of interest, Council Faray is attending via Zoom, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, Mr. President.
Oh, hey, good morning, Jeff.
Good morning, everybody.
Yeah. All right. So, you know, there's a thing if somehow we lose communication with council, how are we going to know? I'll call on you from time.
I'll let you know, Mr. President.
Yeah, but we won't be able to hear you.
Thanks, thanks to your board clerk, I've got a number of options.
Okay, good. Yeah, call.
Make it as seamless as possible. Sorry that I didn't make it today.
Yeah, no worries.
We also have our cell phone numbers, so if fallouts fail.
Yeah, text me if, text me if there's an issue.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you all.
Yeah, good, good. All right. So is there anyone from the public wishing to comment at this time?
Mr. President, I don't see any members of the public online at this time. Should anyone join and use the raised hand feature, I'll be sure to let the board know.
Thank you. Then this gets us to the consent calendar, items 5A through F. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Can I move the consent calendar?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Asked 5:0. We didn't have any written communications. I didn't see anything supplemental either, so no written communications. Information reports. We have the fiscal year 2022, quarter ending December of 2021, presentation by Carrie Swainy, our controller. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Mr. to board, President Powell.
So is your mic on, Carrie?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. So this is the second quarter of our budget to actual financial report. Shall I leave it up to the board if they want me to continue the presentation, or is there any specific questions that you just want me to answer on this item?
I'm fine without a presentation. You know, it's following, you know, investment income down, other rate income up.
You know, one of the bigger expense items up was compared to the same time last year was the QSA mitigation, but that's a contracted amount.
That is exactly.
Which, yeah, we're reaching the end of that.
That's correct.
I lost my agenda to go, so I have to be online. New iPad, remember?
It's not even English.
I'm a multi-talented servant.
Yeah, so I don't think we need to go through it in detail, Carrie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information. And then we also have a presentation on, from you, on grant and loan funding opportunities. This one was impressive, yeah. Why don't we go through this since it's such a new, a lot of new opportunities there, it looks like?
Thank you. So, well, before I move on to the next slides, I wanted to provide you a quick overview of our grants and loan process. As you know, we, you know, we're existing need, increasing need of replacing existing facilities, building new infrastructure. There's been a lot of pressure on us to try to find alternative funding opportunities to finance these projects. So in addition to utilizing existing reserves, we have been aggressively pursuing grants and other loans. We are planning to come back to you at a later date to talk more about the long-term financing plan. I think Jeff has brought it up in the, in the last meeting, that we are working on determining the debt capacity for each fund and also help the, the effects on our reserves as we progress in completing these, funding these projects. So part of the grants and loan opportunities that we have, our process in the finance department is divided into two phases. So we have the pre-award or pre-award phase, which is what we call the application phase. And that involves a lot of effort, both from our consultant and also our staffing here to go through the process. Normally, it's about an 18 to 24 month process. So we go through a lot of analysis of cost considerations. Is there a matching share on it? What are the projects that may fit this, this program? Because we do have a timeline of completing the project within three years. So we also have to gauge whether we have the available resources in terms of manpower to complete this project within those timelines. We also analyze whether the post-award, which is the second phase of this, if we, if we get fortunate enough to get awarded these 24 months later, the compliance requirement to fulfill the agreement is also kind of put into analysis to determine if it's worthy for us to approach, to go forward with this program. So as of today, we have about, and you see this in your general managers' report, we have 19 active applications, and we have 17 that has just been awarded. So we have all of that post-compliance that we also have to do on those. It involves quarterly, annual reporting, and then we have to submit invoices for them. Most of these have a six to nine month reimbursement, and some of them even like it's a USDA funding. Some of them actually require us, we cannot ask for reimbursement until the project is complete, so that affects our cash flow as well. So we need to determine our availability of our pay-go reserves to finance these for at least three years before we get funding back from, from these agencies. So a lot of these are kind of weighed in. There's a lot, a lot of analysis that goes into it before we kind of go through the process. So the first three slides, sorry, I'm going to go through, oops, I'm going to go through the next slide. Okay. So the next three slides are upcoming grant opportunities. This is the summer, this is resulting from the Bipartisan Infrastructure Investment Act that came about. Some of them are actually existing programs to just increase the allocation. So we are still in the process of gathering data. We go through grants.com, there's a lot of resources that we go through, but it is a process for us to gather all the information. So what you see in the next three slides are the summary of what we've gathered so far. So we are still trying to gather as much information as we can and then try to fit the projects within this program. So I'm not going to go through every single one unless you have some specific questions, but again, these are the information that we have as of this point.
These, these available allocations, is that statewide?
Yes, that's statewide. And some of, some of them, EPA is actually federal, so that's more, you know, nationwide for some of them, if it's an EPA. But those are just available allocation.
That's the whole country?
Yeah. Available allocation, but then, you know, it's like little chunks. You kind of get little chunks of those. So this can still be changed. These are just what we've gathered on some of the websites that we found, and we're still, again, going through, working with the consultants. It's a group effort from all the departments to try to fill in the blanks on all of these. But we are conscious about the deadlines to make sure that if there's this opportunity, we take advantage of the opportunity.
One observation I had similar years on, it's like assessment for wastewater treatment system at the state water pollution control, you know, $25 million for the whole country. I mean, that's, that's, it's not very much money, right? So it's, you know, it sounds good, and yet when you think about all of the competing states and so forth, and kind of where we're at in relation to some smaller communities that don't have the development resources, it's, and, you know, not talking about that, you know, the east side of the valley where there's a big need, but when you think in terms of across the country, it's, it's not a lot of money.
And some of them are like annual, annual allocation. So there's a couple of them, they're actually in the billions, but they allocate that for the next five years. So each year they determine out of that five billion, how much they're going to issue as a, as a grant for.
So Carrie, is this all new money?
Yes, some of them are new money resulting from that bipartisan infrastructure. And for example, I think the state themselves has approached us because they had extra money from their budget, and they're actually approaching agencies like ourselves to take advantage of that extra funding that they have. And we have, I think we've had a couple of them, like the ARPA funds is another one, and that earmark funding as well.
And then do we consult with our legislative team in DC on, I mean, we have great staff and, you know, we're able to ferret out these, these grant opportunities, but do we consult with them and maybe they can identify sources that we don't know of?
Yes. So Director Scott Burrit and his team are coordinating with our legislative team, so they are taking advantage of those opportunities as well, and then making sure that we coordinate. I think we do have our BBK representative, Anna Lowry, and also, I forgot her name.
Lowry Cook.
Lowry Cook is the one that kind of helps us through this process.
Okay, good, thank you.
Carrie, on, do the, I think it was a good point that you made about the funding pot being larger, and maybe these are just yearly allocations limits that they put for these different programs. The question I have is, does it allow, does, does the, does the funding allow you to tap into multi-year allocations? So let, let's say your, your project is way above, you know, what's available for that particular year. Is it, does the program allow you to say, well, I'll take five this year, but then maybe I'll take five the next year? Or do they, do they only allow you to put in for one project, one time?
I think it depends on the program, but recently there was some from USBR that actually, which is that extraordinary maintenance, which is, you could see on the active one that we just recently applied for, that is a multi-year. Now, for that particular one, though, that's not a grant, it's a loan funding, but they did allow us to do multi-years on that one. So recently, that one had a short deadline, we had two weeks. So operations and engineering came up with a whole bunch of projects and that too applied to take advantage of it. So they've been actively pursuing us. So USBR has actually approached us and inviting us to apply to these programs. So that's been really helpful as well. So it depends on the program, but that's another example, that's an example of a multi-year funding for that particular one. And you can see the details on the, the big, this is all the active list, it's just the 46 active list that we have working on right now. It's the details are in there.
Yeah, that's the big part of the program, that 8.3 billion, or five years, and it's like 1.2, something like that, three years. So they're trying to outline the market of programs, so it's great that you guys are working with that.
Yes, and they actually had another one where it's a planning, where it's not, we won't find out until June 2024, but, you know, they're asking us to come up with the list now. So we're kind of working through that with them as well. So I guess, you know, this is the list that I provided, I kind of didn't put it on a PowerPoint. I think it's more, it's more easier to read on a worksheet. So that is an ongoing list. We do have that on SharePoint. You know, engineering, communications, operations, it's a team effort. So as soon as they do hear something that's coming up new, we put it on that list and we keep track of them, we monitor it, and we make sure to update that as, as, as opportunities come. Engineering as well is very active with, working with us in determining the projects that fit these programs. So I'm not going to go through the three slides unless you have specific questions, but on the list, I will just kind of highlight, there's 13 pages, I don't know if you have that, this one on your report. There's that one for ARPA actually, that is, that I only put down the IXTP project, but they actually came back, came back to us not too long ago saying, can you add more projects? So engineering, Dan Ruiz, with the help of Dan Ruiz, identified the Valley View as a potential project to add with that as well. So we were in the process of applying funding for IXTP already, but then they said, let's kind of hold off, maybe you can add more projects to this funding.
Which, which number are you referring to?
I'm sorry, let me go through.
Or which page?
Carrie, when you say day, when you say day, you mean the County of Riverside?
The County of Riverside, I'm sorry. So page five, it's a number 18.
Okay.
So we applied for a 5.8 million grant for the IXTP, and they have asked us to identify several other projects. So we were able to submit two more, Valley View Domestic Pipeline, Phase One for about $4 million, and then the Valley View Sewer Pipeline, Phase One for about $4.2 million. So we're going to go through that as well.
And you recall the ARPA money went to the cities and the counties, and they're, they kind of follow the state programs, guidelines, and so, and we were part of those conversations. I just want to kind of let the, the rest of the board know that, that the intent, at least from the county's perspective, as they try to make these dollars available for these projects, is to, is to help facilitate the addition of affordable housing, or maybe housing in general in the area. And that, that, I think that's, that's the benefit that they're, that they're trying to create is, is to, is to kind of make a path towards that.
So as much as possible, we take advantage, but again, the key is really our available resources too. I mean, again, there's a completion timeline, three years, so we have to be cognizant of that. So there might be times that we have to pass up on opportunity because we just don't have the ability to complete the project in three years. So that's another consideration that we have to think about when we're applying for these programs, because again, it is a long process. It can be costly. There's some agencies that even requires to pay a fee to apply. So those are the stuff that we have to weigh.
Are we finding that we have some projects where we actually have to delay them to fit them into the time slot?
Yes.
Of that?
Yep. We have been kind of moving some of the projects, you know, just to make sure that we meet the deadlines and the completion dates.
All right, well, good. Get as much as you can.
I'll make one more comment, and maybe this was the purpose of your presentation, but it seemed to me like it emphasized a lot of the federal grants. And I know that at the very end, you, you kind of put up another bullet point there for State Water Resources Board.
Yes.
Which I'm assuming you're saying, a lot of the funding, as you mentioned, coming from the infrastructure bill, is supplementing those programs at the state level as well. But it might be, it might be good, if, I don't know when you plan to bring this up again, but to kind of look at the different pots of money that the state has. Because I get the sense that, that the, that the state probably has a big pot of money for a lot of these things as well. I don't know if these capture those or if they're separate, meaning, you know, maybe this is a pot and then on the federal side, because it looks like it's EPA, but then maybe the state has similar pots or different pots. But, but I know that they, they have big allocations through the Water Resources Control Board, so it might be good to get a sense of that as well.
Yeah, most of them are actually existing programs already, which you find on the big list, the active list. And a lot of them is to increase the allocation. So if in the past, they used to allocate 100 million, now it's 200 million. So a lot of them is like that existing programs, they just bumped up the amount, the amount of funding that's available. But we will kind of go, I can come back as we get more information. If there's anything new that's not part of our active list, you know, we can go ahead and, and add it on the list.
And, you know, I'll just make one more comment. You mentioned that, I think you said USBR is coming to you to help them identify projects, and I don't know if it's because they're trying to divvy out the money, but, but I get the sense that you have the same situation at the state level with their programs. I, I think they already had an issue with that before the increase. You know, you just said maybe it went from 100 million to 200 million a year. So I think that's a good thing that they come to us to help them spend money. I think we do have good projects, and so I'm happy to see that you're kind of keeping tabs on this whole universe here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, one part of money that didn't seem to make the list, but I'd sure like to get Robert that elevated the Lower Basin 500-plus plan, which has $20 million set aside, actually $40 million set aside for California for conservation, system conservation, projects.
Director Nelson, I'm sorry, is your mic on or stop saying the?
Nope, it's not. It is now.
Thank you.
So as I was saying, you know, Robert's been working on the 500-plus plan with the Lower Basin 500-plus plan, which has $20 million from California specifically met and $20 million from the feds to come up with system conservation water in there. And I didn't see it on the list, maybe, maybe I missed it. But I think it ought to be on the list because it is money available, and it's a program that we're investigating and ought to make it up on the list.
I'll make sure to add that to the slide here.
Okay, thank you.
So maybe every so often, we can provide like a report on this every quarter of what if there's anything new that comes up.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next, Dan Reese with item 8A. This is approving the solicitation of bids, monitoring wells. Go ahead.
Good morning, President Powell, board members. So I'll go through the highlights of this board item. If there's any specific questions, we can get into those details. So this is, this project is really to authorize bids for the first phase of our salt nutrient management monitoring plan. So there's a total of 15 monitoring wells and rehab of eight wells included in this plan total overall. That work must be done prior to 2026. This project before you is to request authorization to go out to bid for the first phase. So the first phase includes constructing nine monitoring wells and rehabbing eight existing wells. On top of that, we'd like to also re-drill three monitoring wells at warp two. These are all PVC wells, four inch in diameter, depths range from 100 feet to 350 feet. So we've bundled up these projects because we think it's an attractive bid package. For this first phase, we're estimating the total cost to be about $710,000, and we would spend about $100,000 this fiscal year, excuse me, this fiscal year. The balance would be budgeted next fiscal year. As, as you may know, the, the purpose of these wells is to satisfy regulatory requirements for monitoring salt and nutrients. And with that, if there's any specific questions?
So I have a question for us.
I have a question for Steve in terms of how do we find ourselves with 15 monitoring wells? I mean, this seems like overkill. You know, 15 wells, this is quite an expensive item on the agenda, and so could you comment on what's happening with the board and why we have to meet this onerous regulation?
Sure. The key here is most of the wells we use to monitor the basin are deep. That's the area that is beneficially used from the groundwater basin, and that monitoring doesn't satisfy the Regional Water Quality Control Board's objectives to have a good vertical representation of water quality conditions within the basin. So that means we got to go out there and drill a bunch of shallow wells. And I just might mention, in regards to costs, recall that for our recycle water program, the regional board tacked on a requirement that we monitor a groundwater, groundwater monitoring system for every reuse site that we have from our water reclamation plant number 10. We filed a complaint against the regional and state water boards because that would have impacted our sanitation customers about $100 million to object to that requirement. We settled based on our salt nutrient managing plan, monitoring plan, which includes getting the regional board's buy-in to that program being representative of the vertical distribution of water quality in the basin. So this is a really good deal for the community in Coachella Valley.
I saw a question there. Why, why we only have wells in the east?
So what we're targeting is the wells that are within our Groundwater Sustainability Agency area. There are additional gap wells that will need to be drilled throughout the Indio and Mission Creek sub-basin. We, as a group, with the other eight water and wastewater agencies that have agreed to share the cost to develop the salt nutrient management plan, have applied for technical support services through the Department of Water Resources so that they can come in and fund and drill the remaining gap wells. So that's a really good program. In addition, we've gotten a grant from the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy to drill six of the 15 wells that are in CVWD's GSA area.
Of this project, right?
For this project, yeah.
So that was going to be my question. Why would an agency or a nonprofit like the Mountains Conservancy want to know about groundwater on the valley floor?
So each year, they have monies available, and we hadn't, we hadn't applied for any of those, but typically they're focused on learning more about aquatic environments within the Coachella Valley, everything from weed abatement in stormwater channels to something like this where shallow groundwater conditions can have a link to our washes and channels that carry water through the valley.
These ecosystem.
Groundwater-dependent ecosystems, yeah. So this will provide us data to defend our position on those conditions in the valley that were in our Indio Sub Basin Water Management Plan that we just updated. So it was a great link, it kind of popped up at the last minute, so we identified it and.
Where do they get their money?
That's part of Prop 1. It's some of the Prop 1 funds.
Makes any sense.
Yeah, and they actually.
Prop 1 is for, for, for water storage projects.
A whole bunch of things, yes, including water storage and.
All those great water storage projects they built.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they actually have had some difficulty using those monies. In fact, Mission Springs Water District got a grant to drill several shallow monitoring wells up along the Willa Hole area of the fault to monitor shallow groundwater conditions near the fault of the Mission Creek sub-basin, using. near the fault of the Mission Creek sub-basin, using funds from the Coachella Valley Mountains Conservancy.
Steve, I have a question. So do these wells, are they monitored consistently or are they occasional testing or how does that work?
Yeah, different programs, different monitoring. And some of these wells will be used for the Coachella Valley Irrigated Lands Coalition programs, salt nutrient management, water levels. So, you know, we'll be out there three times a year doing water levels, water qualities less frequent. The wells at Water Reclamation Plant Two, which are also part of this project, are a requirement of our discharge order. We've had wells out there for about 20 years. They now need to be replaced, and that's what this project does for those three wells. The nested wells that are part of this project...
I was going to ask you about that. What's a nested well?
So back about 20 years ago, Robert Robinson worked on installing these wells to monitor all different levels of the aquifer to look at saltwater intrusion due to groundwater overdraft that was occurring at that time. So we were able to see what are the salt levels in different layers of the aquifer down by the Salt and Sea, where at the time, we believed there was saltwater intrusion occurring because groundwater levels were drawn down. Of course, now water levels are back up, and we believe we've addressed any saltwater intrusion occurring in the East Valley as a result of our water management plan. But this provides that data, looking at salinity, to see if we're seeing a change in salinity at different layers of the basin. So the nest of wells has multiple wells in a nest, and each well goes to different levels. And at least one of those wells in one of the bas... There's two nested wells, and one well in one of the nests goes down over 1,500 feet into a highly saline part of the groundwater basin, maybe 20,000 parts per million of salinity, very corrosive, and it's under pressure, so it's artesian. So it has done, it's very aggressive, the well, we got 20 years out of it, that's pretty good for that type of well. So hopefully, we'll be able to rehab it and keep that, those wells going.
So if these are, so I'm going to get back to the physical aspect of it now. So these are, there's some two-inch wells getting replaced with a four-inch well. And I'm told that my phone has more computing power than, you know, the first Apollo missions, right? And so I guess I could go to the moon. And, you know, I'm looking at technology that's really getting smaller and smaller. Why is it that we have to go bigger on these wells? And why can't we use smaller equipment to either sample or video or things like that? I was a little concerned that we've got these two-inch wells that we have equipment stuck in it. Well, why are they putting too big of equipment? You know, why don't you miniaturize it? It just seems like that'd be a natural thing to do.
So we have portable monitoring equipment, which is much more cost-effective than installing dedicated pumps in these wells. And, you know, we have a lot of ground movement here, especially where our water reclamation plant number two is very close to the San Andreas Fault. So you may have a nice two-inch casing that gets just slightly out of line, and you have a one and three-quarter inch pump that you're trying to put down there, and you've got to have, you've got to have enough capacity to lift the water. So the deeper the water, the more powerful pump you need, usually the bigger the pump is. So you're trying to...
These are shallows, Steve. These are, these are...
Ward Two are a little deeper, but not too deep. But you're still, you need capacity to purge the well. Plus, so you can do very small, low-capacity pumping and spend five hours at each well, purging it for each sample. Or you can have a higher-capacity well that's more efficient from a man-hour perspective. And when you're going out there every month and doing this monitoring, you have someone sitting out there all day trying to purge the wells is less cost-effective. So you gotta factor in that, too.
So are we going to hire FTEs to monitor these, all these new additional wells?
We do not believe we will. We believe we have the capacity to work this in. We are getting reductions in monitoring in other areas of our programs that will free up staff so that we can take on these additional duties. In addition, some of these wells that are in other GSA areas will be monitored by Coachella Water Authority, Indio Water Authority, Desert Water Agency area. So it's going to be a, you know, a group effort for the salt nutrient management plan.
Will the state board approve our salt nutrient management plan if we move forward with this?
They have already approved the monitoring plan for the salt and nutrient management plan. These wells are in that monitoring plan. It's been approved, and that was a...
So have they approved the overall plan?
Okay, so that's a six-year project. We have gotten approval of the work plan that will be used to produce the salt and nutrient management plan. That's step one. And now we get to work collaboratively with our friends at the Regional Water Quality Control Board and all of our water and wastewater and other salt and nutrient contributors, possibly Ag and Gulf might come in and join us. And it's going to be a lot of work in the next six years, and the outcome is substantial for this valley.
I mean, I got to tell you, I'm involved in some groundwater issues up north, and no one I know of is putting in as many wells as we're putting in right here. It's just unbelievable, the expense that we're going to, that is, seems to me, a lot of it is redundant in this perch water table. You've got 15 wells that, it just seems like it's overkill on this.
Less than they initially required.
I hear what you're saying, and you guys, and I'm not going to discount the fact that you've done a good job in not having wells at each, you know, point of use of reclaimed water or Colorado River water. But it's just overkill by the regional board.
I'm not going to argue with that, and we did our best to whittle this down to something as reasonable as possible. And, you know, we don't always agree with some of the staff decisions in the Regional Water Quality Control Board, but we still have to work collaboratively with them. We have a big project coming up here, and the ramifications of it, a good example is the Central Valley Salts Program, CB Salts. You know, that's a three-decade-long project of determining what we will be working on determining for this valley in the next six years. So...
So why don't we spread it out over 30 years?
We tried to get as much time as we could from the regional board, and they wanted it in three years. We got six. So again, we're trying to, now, we have learned a lot from the time the San Ana River Basin did their, you know, gold standard groundwater management, salt nutrient management plan. Central Valley is done there, so now they've kind of set a template that we will certainly benefit from and shave time off that it takes. So we think we can get it completed in six years.
Want to try and come back?
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Okay. I have so many more questions, but I, we need to manage our time, too. Someday, we'll have an offline chat about that 20,000 parts per million saline part of our aquifer that I don't, that I don't understand. But some other time, we'll talk about that.
Sounds good. It's down deep. It's ancient and it's down deep.
Yeah, as long as they don't blame us for that one. All right.
President, I'll move approval of the item.
Okay. For a second, I'll second that motion for approval. John, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion before we vote? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
We have four to one, I think it passed. Thanks, Steve. Yeah, are you here for item C, this gentleman and the audience?
You say.
You.
You're the only one, it's not a staff member. The third agenda item C.
Yeah, item C. All right, so, because we have, this is a quick one, we may need to turn and come back because of our timing on the closed session. Why don't we do that? So why don't we take items 8C right now, and then we'll go to closed session, then we'll reopen after that because we have our timing issue. All right, so 8C. Hi, Dan. Oh, you're already here.
Yep.
This is, this is the second time we've seen this regarding the Thousand Palms Agreement. Okay, go ahead.
Correct. And so just a brief recap, on January 25th, this item was brought in front of the board. The board had several questions regarding the wellsite requirement for this particular project. Just as a quick recap, this project is located in Thousand Palms within a conservation area. Back in 2005, an agreement was signed, the developer was obligated to provide CBWD with a wellsite with site improvements. The current developer, who's here this morning, has requested that that requirement be waived. We had negotiated in lieu fee of $100,000, which is staff's recommendation today, along with the fence around the site. The board's question at that time, though, of staff was to understand how many agreements were out there that still had wellsite requirements pending. So based on research that we've done, there's 21 developer agreements currently today that have outstanding wellsite requirements of about 50 well sites. And so I know the board had wanted that information to understand what impacts, if any, might happen with this particular project. Based on our research, there are no other wellsite requirements in conservation areas. And so that was really, I believe, the question that was asked of staff. Developer is here today again. He may or may not want to make some comments, so...
All right, if you would like to comment, now would be a good time. Please, please come forward. Thank you.
And just make sure the blue light is on there for the microphone.
My name is Tim Graham. So just to clarify what Dan had put out there, you know, this was a requirement back in 2005 with the Coachella Valley Multi-Species Plan, which I did not even find out until Dan did some research, is they don't even allow you, even if you wanted your well dug there, you can't because it's in the plan. So going back, you know, 15 years, it should have been removed in its entirety at that point in time, once the plan came in. Because this project was being final mapped at the same time the multi-species plan came in and overlaid everything. And since it was already a map, they took our five-acre lots and shrunk them to one and a half acres. So you can only build on one and a half acres there, and there's eight lots, so. And there's nothing but government-owned land around it, so there's really no need for a well. Plus, even if there was, you couldn't dig one anyway because of the plan. And so because of that, you know, we had thought the last session that it probably should have just been removed in its entirety as a condition. Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for.
Thank you.
Right, but didn't we have a negotiated agreement with the developer prior to coming in? And there now is a request to change that agreement.
Correct. Yeah, I think we understand that. Okay, well, you know, we did ask to get more information, so I appreciate receiving that information. I mean, my concern was that we were, that if we were going to waive the wellsite requirement, or at least waive the payment of the money, that we might be creating other unintended consequences based on the fact that there are no other projects that are going to have the same sort of loss of, it looks like, I mean, it looks like loss of use. I mean, you're not able to use the property the way it was, the way the wellsite requirement intended it to be used or thought it was going to be used. I think it's a unique situation that, at least, I'm not concerned about creating problems on these other projects if we did something unusual here.
I would agree. Are the sites going to be developed? It looks like there's eight sites, acre and a half, or, I don't know, are they going to be developed?
They're final mapped, eight lots, which I happen to be closing Espro on it this Thursday, hopefully, we'll see, so that, you know, just to build single-family homes on there.
And so where would the water come from, for those homes?
There's city water already there, or there's CBWD water in the streets already. Yeah, there's water, it's there.
I don't have any issues with it. I think it's a unique situation, can be used, can be developed, that doesn't seem like a big loss.
I would think, the one thing, if you do approve this, is what do you want to do with the half acre as it sits? That's just something to discuss.
Yeah, I mean, I, we already have the deed on the half acre.
Yes.
And we can use it for mitigation with other projects.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would propose that we remove the requirement for the wellsite and the payment of the money, but we can keep the land.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
You can swap it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and then that, I would agree with that, and then it comes up with the fence. I mean, that's a big area out there. Is it all fenced, or we're just taking this little square and putting a fence on it?
Do we need a fence?
Yeah, I don't know if we need a fence.
We don't need a fence.
Steph, Steph had proposed a fence just to prevent anyone from dumping any rubbish on the site.
I mean, I agree that, however, if you look at it, there's a lot better places to dump than that site because of the way it's sitting. Because I know they're dumping at the end of my street.
Oh, my gosh.
Or they could just go past this into the...
I mean, we have, we have sites all over the place that don't have fences around them that people wanted to dump, right?
But when you develop that, two sides are going to be walled. Put a monitoring well on it?
Right now, there's horse fencing, there's this white horse fencing, and it just goes around your half-acre site. So it's not going to be walled, I don't think. No, you can't, you can't wall it anyway, you can't, because it's in the conservation.
I just wanted to make sure the board's aware that under the Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, we are able to build facilities in conservation areas as part of the permit. And there is a limit to how much disturbance you can do in a conservation area, and there's rough step proportions for conservation to offset. But I just wanted to make sure you're aware that we are able to construct a well at this site if we needed to. This would not be an ideal location for a well because of its proximity to the San Andreas Fault. But I just, before you made that decision...
That's fine, all right, appreciate that.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, yeah. No, all right, so I'll make a motion to waive the requirement but to keep the land.
I would second.
Any other...
Fence or no fence?
I guess there's no fence, right?
No.
I mean, we could build a fence if we want, but why? So...
Mr. Chair, if I may, so the proposals for a draft amendment to the current agreement that obligates the well, so you're proposing to have a draft amendment that takes out the requirement for the payment of the money?
Yes.
Okay.
So that there's no requirement to build a well or pay the money?
We'll document, exactly.
Yeah, there would be no requirement.
But we will document, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we can do that today, so we're not just rejecting staff's recommendation, we're changing, essentially changing the agreement with the proposer.
Correct, so the agreement would be amended to show no payment and no fence.
Right.
Right.
Due to the fact that the Coachella Valley Multi-Species Conservation Habitat had made the lot size smaller thereby...
Bigger.
Or, yeah, thereby not necessitating a well requirement with CBWD.
Okay.
Do we have other requests pending for any waivers for any of the other 20 or so well sites?
None, none that I've been made aware of. This is the only one. So we went and researched all the agreements with current outstanding wellsite requirements. This is the only one where the developer has requested a waiver.
And it's the only one in a conservation area?
Correct.
Which is the key?
Which is the key?
Yeah, that's the key. Alright, so there's a motion in a second. Do we have any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay.
Could I have one more question?
Good, good luck on your escrow.
Hey, he'll be happy now. As far as moving forward, there's a condition on the title, you know, that has this condition. How do I go about from here forward to get that condition removed from title? Does anything from here, do I speak to anyone in particular?
We'll, we'll work with you.
We'll have a revised agreement?
Yeah, we'll have a, an amendment.
That reflects this, okay.
Gentlemen, thank you for your common sense.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Alright, so given our time constraint with one of our presenters in closed session, what I'd like to do now, if there's no objection, is, is
This is super quick, the next one you just.
Eight B?
Yeah.
While you want to do eight B right now?
It's like super quick.
I could be.
While Dan's sitting there?
Very quick.
Alright, we'll do eight B and then we're going to go. So, uh, let's do eight B quickly.
So, so very quickly, when the county constructed the Great Separation Project, there were power poles in Hammond Road that were in conflict with the elevated structure. IED had to relocate four poles, they put in 100-foot tall steel poles with nine-and-a-half-foot diameter concrete foundations, two feet away from our existing 12-inch diameter east side water main. That, we allowed IED to move forward with that with the understanding that the county would relocate our water lines so we could actually get equipment near there. This is a critical pipeline that serves the community south. And as part of that relocation, we've recommended that they upsize that pipe from 12 to 18 inch, that we would pay for in the amount of $144,900 out of monies already on deposit with the county. Reason for upsizing this pipe is, it's a 12-inch pipe that feeds all of North Shore and Bombay Beach. It's way too small. So we think this is a good, a good move and a cost-effective move to help, help with that short reach of pipe.
Mr. Chairman, item move approval, I thought was a good, I mean, it's coming in under budget, so
A good catch.
It was a good catch, and someone else is paying to move the pipe, which will make it new, and we get to upsize it too, so I would.
Because you're bringing the transmission main. That's going to connect to it, right?
Yes.
Or is it from the other side? No, you're going to connect to it, right?
On Avenue 66, so this will connect to that 12-inch and this 18-inch.
I'll second.
Okay. You didn't get your motion last second, though.
No, I'm fine with that, as long as it passes.
Alright, any other discussion before we vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Alright, alright, thanks, Dan. So at this time, we'll adjourn to closed session to consider the items on that part of the agenda. And we will reconvene here, we'll report out on closed session, then we'll take up items eight D and the remainder of the open session agenda. Alright. So the regular meeting is reconvened. We have no reportable action from closed session. And we still have the remainder of our open session agenda to attend to. The first item that we will do is eight D, which is approving the seventh.
And I believe Jeffrey will take that.
Mr. President, if I may.
Go ahead.
If the board wishes to take action today, then pursuant to the requirements of the Government Code 54953, the Brown Act, prior to taking action, it must be disclosed that the board is considering the following. Number one, that the final action would adjust the current base salary of the general manager of 308,969 by a cost of living increase of 5%, which would result in a new base salary of 324,418, effective as of the first pay period in January 1, 2022. And two, general manager would be eligible for a discretionary bonus of between 0 and 10% of base salary based on factors or criteria for 2022, which would be adopted as part of the Seventh Amendment. The only purposes of the Seventh Amendment are to incorporate the COLA and to set forth the goals for 2022. That is before you, it's part of the agenda packet, part of the public record. So if the board wishes, they could take action to approve the Seventh Amendment.
Thank you, Jeff. Alright.
Mr. President, I would like to move the item for approval, please.
I'll second your motion, John. And just comment that one, we're getting this done a little quicker this year. And, and two, I'm looking forward to working together on some of these items that are listed on the exhibit. And I do appreciate Jim working with you as our general manager, it's.
As I do with all of you.
Thank you. Jim, I, I just want to say the same thing. It's been great working with you, and I look forward to working on the next list of items, and so thank you and good job.
Aye, sir. You're welcome.
Good, we have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? I don't hear anyone. That's past 5:00.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Board member general comments, Director Nelson.
Uh, no comments today.
No comments.
No comments.
Uh, just one comment for general manager, if, um, he could just, in his comments, give us a quick, quick statement on where we're at with the agreement with the county for those ARPA funds for the IXTP plant. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and I'll, I'll waive any, my comments too. Get, let's get into these meetings then. First one, January 4th, I guess you got a little catching up. Oh, you and Estrada, Victor Estrada and Bianca both have catching up. Go ahead and just take them.
Okay, so, um, I was on that mediation Zoom call on January 4th. I'm sure you, you covered what that was about, John, but it's the, so just want to say that I was there participating.
And then the Gulf.
So the Gulf's really trying to take a real proactive approach on, on trying to reduce water, and they've got a good team, and, and, uh, some people are doing a really good job, so. It's little by little.
Good, and the 27th, Salt Lake City, thirty?
Yeah, that was another regular meeting. So we went over the state reports, federal reports, presentations, and just a general meeting, I was there.
And the ledge committee on the same day?
Yes, I was on that legislative committee meeting with Director Aguilar. We covered, um, a number of different items on the federal side, the state side. And I think, what I recall is, we kind of got a, being that it was at the beginning of the year, kind of a recap of the schedule, when bills are being introduced, when they have to be out of committee, when the budget gets approved, et cetera, et cetera. It was, um, kind of a, a refresher on the start of the year's schedule.
Good, okay. Colorado River Board on the ninth.
I did not, unfortunately, did not attend that meeting.
So I, I did attend that meeting, and it was our first in-person meeting in the last couple of years, and we had about three or four directors out of 10 there. So, um, we're going to continue with the Zoom and in-person platform probably every other month. And it was pretty much a general reporting on, on what the river conditions were, and had some talk of the 500-plus plan, updating that, and then some discussion about the Upper Basin JROA plan. And then some conversation about how the Bureau is adjusting their five-year projections using a different model. So, that's about it.
Good, um, CBCC on the 10th, Director Bianco.
Um, they bought two more parcels, 166 acres. And then, um, they entered into an agreement with Pacific Policy Group for, a new lobbying group for CBCC.
Okay, good.
And then for, uh, they did, had an action item for a member, MOU with Seabag and IID to kind of work together to kind of, to come over a local collaborative governance of electrical service solution post 2013, 2033, excuse me. So they are, they are getting involved.
Good, Finance Committee on the 14th.
Yes, we went over the different portfolios that we, that we manage. I think in general, things look positive. One of the things that came out of that meeting is that we made a recommendation for kind of bring, end of the year recap of how our financials did at the end of the year, so that's something that staff is going to implement, so that the full board gets a chance to kind of get a sense of how our portfolios have been performing. And with that, I'll let Director Aguilar add, anything else?
Thank you, I would just add that there will be, there were some proposed changes to the investment policy that was discussed, that were discussed, that have been recently allowed with changes in the Government Code, and those will be coming to the full board, I believe as a consent item. Jim, I'm not sure if that's on the next agenda, but coming soon for full board approval, and that's all I would have to add.
Thank you. Study session on the 15th on the sanitation cost of service. I was on by Zoom, but some of you were there. And then on the 16th to 17th, Urban Water Institute Virtual Spring Conference.
That was originally planned as a, I attended that as, I think as well as John, and it was originally planned in person in Palm Springs, but it got moved to a Zoom meeting. I found particularly interested the session on the future, the future view, the aranceience of the black swan. Is, is there a black swan in our future, like some unpredictable event? And so Tom Kennedy was on that panel, as well as Jeff Kiteinger, Pat Mulroy, and Felicia Marcus. And it was quite an interesting group to have Felicia and Pat Mulroy describe history and what works and what doesn't. And at one point, everyone was biting their tongue on the differences of the two perspectives there. But, you know, there were, there were calls in that event, like if this, in that panel, about the whole rewriting of the compact and the Colorado River Compact, or water rights in general to meet certain M and I, not M and I, but municipal uses, uses. And so that was quite a, quite a conversation. Couple of the members wanted to redo water rights, and the other members like Pat and Jeff is, there's no way you're going to rewrite those comments. So, those regulations, so interesting. I don't know if you had anything else to add, John?
No, I would just say, yeah, I found it very interesting. I was particularly struck by a theme that kind of permeated all the speakers, which is that a long-term planning is really critical, and it struck me that we're really good at doing long-term planning, so I, I felt good about what we're doing to, to help protect the aquifer here. But there was one item in a discussion on Sigma that really struck me, talking about how the, the, in order to meet the hydrology balance by 2040, that they may have to fellow a million acres, one out of five acres to meet the Sigma numbers in the San Juan Valley. And that really was shocking, I found. So it was interesting.
What, what year did they say?
Well, by 2040.
Most of, most of the GSAs have, are starting to implement, and there've only been two GSAs that have implemented so far, but starting to implement ramp down schedules that go out to 2040. And so, like, Semi-Tropic, for example, their water storage district, that they have a ramp down schedule of four acre-feet per acre start out with, and you end up with one acre-feet per acre at the end. So that's, you know, you're, unless you have contract water, you're, you know, you're out of luck of native safe field. Other, other districts are starting out with three to 2.25 and getting down to 0.5 acre-feet per acre.
That means how much water you can, you can pull out of a well?
Can pull out of the ground. Yeah, so groundwater pumping regulations, so it's, you know, regulated, you can only pull out so much. So that's why if you have one acre-feet per acre of native safe field, you can't survive on that, so there's where you have to reduce acres to be able to aggregate your land to meet only a certain amount of production.
Boy, this is a meeting, Director Estrada.
I, I don't see that meeting on, on my calendar. And I'm just not sure if that was a meeting that, I'm not sure if that was the meeting that we were trying to schedule with EPA that got canceled, that I know is, we're working to.
It got rescheduled.
That's the one that got rescheduled?
Yeah.
Okay.
That was the one with Martha Guzman.
Yes, okay, thank you. So that meeting has been rescheduled.
Okay, and then additional meetings, I had a few that might, a couple of you might also have. On the February 11th, we had the principals' meeting with, in the Agrocoliente mediation, and I think we mentioned we're going to have, try to have our next one either the March 17th or 18th coming up. And Director Estrada was there also. We also had a, on the 16th, we had a Zoom with our team on the, regarding the mediation. And then on February 17th, I had a DVBA board meeting in Palm Desert, and we had a pretty interesting, they, they really worked so hard to become members of the National Association of Home Builders, and there was a national meeting in Florida last week or two weeks ago. And the vote was unanimous to add DVBA as a member to that, which is, which includes territory. And it was a huge accomplishment for them, so. Good on them, good, good work by the folks doing that. And, and our new chair is Todd Hooks, who's the, who is, who's part of the team over at the Agrocoliente. He's a good guy. That's it for my extras, any other extra meetings?
Yeah, I have just a couple. On February 11th, we had a Seven Basin States Coordinating Committee meeting. So the seven states principals talking about getting together on the 25th in-person in Salt Lake City to look at and discuss some of the key issues of the Upper Basin states. Planning for JROA, the 500-plus plan, as well as looking ahead towards the 2026 negotiating guidelines and trying to set parameters for the Seven Basin States Principals Meeting. So, and then on, to February 15th, I had a Bureau Reclamation AG listening session where the Bureau is going out to tribal entities as a tribal listening program, but they're also going out to AG. So, Robert Cheng did an excellent job at representing AG from a Coachella Valley Water District perspective, as well as it was Western Growers commented, and the Farm Alliance, Pat O'Toole was one of the other commenters among four or five. So it was a good, good session. And then on February 18th, I attended Bureau Reclamation update on the method for developing their five-year Colorado River projections, where they're looking at refining, as you know, the five-year projection is new. They, they have that 24-month study, which they update every month, and the five-year projection comes out periodically, and so they're using, they're evaluating the differences between the Colorado River Simulation System, they're evaluating the differences between the Colorado River Simulation System, which is called CRIS, and then the other one is, uh, the, let's see, uh, there's the CRIS, and then there's the, um, uh, Colorado River Midterm Modeling System. So it's kinda two methodologies and they're, they're really doing a good job at refining that outlook for five years. Uh, none of it appears good as, as positive results, right? It's a, it's a good, it's a good update, but it's, projects a more dire future. So that's what they're up to. Um, so those are the, just three actually.
Mr. President, I have, um, also a few meetings. On February 3rd, uh, I had a meeting with, uh, the county, um, for a practice run on, uh, some talking points and presentation that we were gonna do, uh, as part of community outreach for the, the North Lake Project. Um, so we had a practice run, kind of talked about, uh, the agenda. And we actually had the, the community outreach meeting on February 5th. So that's another meeting that, that I was, uh, participant of. And, um, that meeting, uh, was between the, uh, Salt Sea Authority and the County of Riverside. It was set up as a panel discussion. Um, it was, uh, there was a presentation, uh, and then, uh, uh, Juan Perez was kind of the, uh, the moderator and, and the panel was myself, uh, Supervisor Perez and Assembly Member Garcia. Um, it was a lengthy, lengthy meeting, maybe about three hours, a lot of public comment. Uh, but I think overall, a good, a good meeting. Um, February 10th, um, I had a working group, uh, a working group on, um, on, uh, the North Lake Project. Also, that's a meeting where the Salt Sea Authority participates with the county and, um, the state. Um, kinda setting a timeframe on the schedule for the North Lake Project, identifying about, uh, uh, the next steps that we need to take, there's permitting issues, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, on the, I think you've already mentioned that, um, we had the actual meeting with the Iowa mediation on the 11th, and then we had a call to the brief on that on the 16th, right?
Right.
So just wanna make sure I, and then I have one, I have a meeting on my calendar for the 7th, but I think that was the one that got postponed to the 11th, right? So just wanna make sure we didn't have to, cause I, I still have it in my calendar, but I don't think we, uh, we, we did the 7th. So, um, those are my meetings. Thank you.
Correct. Any others? Is there a motion to approve per diem for the meetings reported on?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Asked. General Manager report.
Yes, sir. Um, well, first to answer, uh, Director Estrada's question about the status of the ARPA funds. Um, as the rest of the board may recall, we were trying, we've been trying to get, uh, ARPA funds for the, uh, design reconstruction of the, uh, well, 7991, uh, to try and provide supplemental water out there to the Mecca area. And, uh, that, um, that was, uh, is being, um, worked by the county. Uh, we subsequently found out the end of January that they might have more uh, ARPA funds available, about nine million. So they asked for some projects. Uh, on the 8th of February, the county told us they're still working on drafting the agreement. Uh, they've gotta get it through their council. They've gotta get it through, uh, Supervisor Perez's and his staff, and then they've gotta get to the funding agencies, but they only wanna do this once. So what kind of additional projects, uh, could we add? So on the 14th of February, we sent them two projects. Uh, Valley View Sewer Phase One and the Valley View, uh, Domestic Water Pipeline Phase One. The sewer was worth about 4.2 million. The drinking water was about four million, so about 8.2 million or the nine million that is available. And we are still waiting for the county to tell us whether or not those projects are, have been accepted. And then, uh, there has been no update on the status of the funding agreement. So, uh, the ball's in the county's court. And, um, I can send you an email that's got more details on the projects themselves if, if that would be helpful. But essentially, we're, the person we're dealing with, um, I can tell you that later as well. I don't wanna say.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's good enough.
Um, and then on the regular, uh, stuff that I talk about, the latest on the COVID-19 stats, we've got currently four qualifying cases, 242 recovered, uh, unfortunately, two mortalities. We've got four direct contacts, essentially six off work right now. We've had 12 cases for the month of February. Uh, we've, uh, continued to collect, uh, status on, uh, vaccinations. We've got about 450, uh, now that have documented their vaccination status. We've still got, uh, 25 exemptions pending. Uh, and as far as I know, there's been no movement at all on the stay, uh, on the court case that challenged the administration's ruling that federal contractors, uh, needed to be vaccinated without, uh, testing alternatives. So we are not moving forward with, uh, our, uh, policy of requiring vaccination mandates, although we are still encouraging our folks to get vaccinated. Just not, and, and asking for documentation when that occurs. That's all I've got, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Council Report.
Yes, Mr. President, just for briefly to, uh, to follow on to Jim's comments. The governor, as you know, came out with his California Smarter Plan for the next phase of dealing with the COVID response. And I only mention that because the smarter is an acronym, and the, and the R in the word smarter is readiness. And it's mentioned a number of times in this plan that the readiness includes to maintain wastewater, uh, surveillance in all regions and enhance respiratory surveillance in order to sequence and determine if there's any new COVID, uh, specimens or strains that may occur in the future. And I'm sure you, your technical folks are more in tune with what that means, but using wastewater, uh, and, uh, getting that information or the state asking for that information has, has been deemed to be really beneficial in terms of trying to, uh, predict where the COVID strains are located. So I'm sure that, um, the district will be on top of that. That's all I have today, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any department reports?
Well, I, the only department head I see here is Steve Bigley. So Steve, did, did you have anything you wanted to offer?
You've said enough. You've said enough. All right. So, and with no further business, then, uh, we are adjourned. Thanks for coming, everybody.